Okay, we'll call the main order. Now we solved all that. You there? You this morning?
All right. Um, they have seventy-one inmates, twelve are Department of Corrections. Our local jail population's been increasing last couple of months, so probably will be a busy summer. Mainly thefts, drug arrests, uh, scrap metal catalytic converters are on the rise, uh, probably across state of the least, but, uh, five thousand five hundred fifty-eight twenty-five four-year date collections. The personal protection permit's still on the rise, so, um, we're just talking in a good way with that, so. It's one of our funding here at the meeting.
At this point, they go to dead down legislature again, I would say?
I don't know. If they have, I didn't see it.
Last few days, I think the Senate put us off for that.
Okay.
Hey, man, I didn't get that back.
Yeah. Uh, we did have our, uh, Department firearms auction. That was for our seized and forfeiture firearms. That was last Saturday. Uh, raised just shy at forty thousand dollars, so it's thirty-nine, I don't remember. Thirty-nine seven or thirty-nine eight, so just shy.
How many guns did you sell?
I think roughly a hundred and thirty. It started out good towards the end of it. They started selling cheap, but I mean, we didn't have a dime into them. They were, but, and that all either goes back to our forfeiture account or our firearms training account, so it all, all goes back to the county or department, so. So that, that will help. I think we still have maybe forty guns left that we just couldn't get to. We'll have to sell a seized car in September, so we may have a small auction again in September.
I went down to the preview. I wasn't so much interested in the guns, but the coin thing, except for coin auction, you know? There's a lot of people just at the preview when I was there.
They, they thought that would be a forty-five minute auction. I think it was a two and a half hour auction, so. That's all I have of.
Fraser, you gonna have anything like say?
Nope.
No? I'm good to see you anyway.
Good to see you, buddy.
Yeah, good to see you anyway. Pete?
Nothing.
Nothing? Wow. Chris?
So, um, I amended the five-year plan because I thought it had been accepted by the DNR last year, but it missed the deadline. Um, it's been accepted this year, and I've actually got a copy for all of you of the amended plan and the acceptance letter in there. So, it's kind of a learning experience. I've never done one of those, but my son.
Maybe he got a job.
Yeah.
At least he got a job, so.
But it's over with now, so we can now apply for grants from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-six.
Great. Thanks for getting that done.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah. Get somebody to do that.
That Art Direct fund, it's supposed to be five seventy-five, not five twenty-five. For the, you on your gator?
Well, got it.
That's all I have.
Randy?
How's everybody doing today?
Good. Not Randy.
Hi, Rob. Well, July is coming pretty quick. Greater, greater leases will be up. And as one bad loser of them, they went up considerably. Should be ten in there.
Yeah, we just take that out of sales or anything.
I think that's where it comes out seldom commission.
Yeah.
That's probably what's built that salesman commission up.
Oh, yeah.
It's much only the.
Only got to pay for that new store that's down there.
Yeah, that's true. That's true.
All forty-six.
We have the option, of course, of buying, purchasing of these graders through a job release, or if we wanted to try to get financing on our own. There's a price per grader.
So, helped interpret this a little bit.
Okay. For each grader.
What I remember right now is that, and I think I see this on here, is we, we pay about twenty-five-five
Yeah.
a year, four each, and they were three-year deals, which is why you're here now.
Yeah. Now, the, the new leases will be for five years. And, um, the seven, like just, the grader, just like we've got, seven seventy-two G, six-wheel drive, is forty-three thousand two hundred ninety-nine dollars and fifty-eight cents each a year. Down the bottom.
Why are, uh, so that's significant. All right, that's eighteen thousand dollars more per year. Uh, it's also five years.
Yeah, it's five years.
Why are we, why is it up so much, and why are, why is it now a five-year deal instead of a three?
Well, we, we changed it to the five-year deal because it, of course, gave you the lower payment, and you're still under warranty the whole time. So, um, the, the significant difference is if you look at your lease buyout, up under option one, two hundred thirty-two thousand one thirty-three, then if you look at the lease buyout, uh, down to very bottom, purchase option into five years, it's a hundred thirty-nine oh fifty-five.
Right.
And the reason is, it's the market. It's flooded with motor graders, and, uh, it's not only us, cats are doing the same thing. And, uh, they, they came out the first of the year and said, we're losing about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars every time we take the lease grader back in. And, uh, we have a lot of them to take in. So, we're, we're moving that around. So, it's something that we didn't like, but we all live with it, so. It's not, it, it, it's the finance side doing, driving that practice out of me still.
Yeah, and tractors and all that stuff, that, I mean, that's been, the, the way that these many OEMs have been able to move equipment for the last several years is leasing a lot of it, right? So then you get two or three-year-old machines on the market that nobody wants.
You can, you can look.
They still unfortunate.
You can look online and see. Look at, you know, how many, how much stuff is out there. It's, it's perfect. There's, there's a lot there.
Are the current ones still under warranty?
Uh, through the end of July, when the lease is done.
There are only three-year warranty on those machines, but these other ones will be at five years?
Yes. And that, that, that forty-three thousand two ninety-nine also includes the PMs?
Right.
So one got new tires on it the other day?
Yeah, because they have to be at least fifty percent when we trade them back in, and they were shot.
We paid for the tires?
We paid for the tires. And I've got enough tires to put on the other three on the rear. The front should be all right. There, there, to me, I measured the tread depth on the new tires and tread depth on the front ones on these other graders, and they're a little over half yet, so that should be all right.
When we got these three, the three that we have now, wasn't there an issue, or four, I'm sorry, uh, wasn't there an issue with the, the blade cutting edge or something, or did we not get the right?
Well, that, we get what the factory give with them.
Uh-huh.
They're, they're a soft blade.
And they're a soft blade?
So we just. We're, we're, we've, we've got soft ones to go back on these. When we take our good blades off and put the soft ones back on, and I'm supposed to hear that, Chris.
With a dirt blade.
Don't look either.
So that's how it's paying with, right? So it's wait, because I remember when we first got one.
Oh, yeah, we was going through blades every three days.
Well, I knew there was an issue, but those were.
Yeah, one got in the morbid, morbid, and we had to replace it.
Yeah.
New morbid, morbid.
Just so you know, I, I do put the heaviest blade that I have on that, the cutting edge on it.
Oh, do you?
That they offer me.
But it's.
They don't offer you heavy.
Just, it's not heavy enough for what we're.
Yeah, we'll just take, if we get new ones, when we do, we'll just take those off and replace them, keep them back for when we trade them off.
The other Randy goes to, uh, what most counties run in, which is a, it's a, I think it even has a part surfacing put on it, doesn't it, Randy?
Arco here.
Yeah.
It's applied welded into.
Cardboard inserted cardboard. They last quite a while unless they have.
I don't want to be any ownership business either, but, um, I'm just, I'm staring a little bit at this, do you keep them for a couple more years, but, and then do it, but that's a significant jump in the price of the leases. Do you need a six-month rider?
No, I don't think so. That's one of the other options we was going to talk about. We get the smaller grader, well, it's the same size grader, but just four-wheel drive and fifty horsepower less.
Yes.
We can get that for thirty-nine, two thirty-five, thirteen, which I save a little.
Should you go here?
And I think we can get by that just fine.
Basically, the four rear.
He even brought up the.
The purchase option.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
He even brought up the printout of the times that the graders had six-wheel drive in and the differential locks in and all that.
Oh, you can.
Yeah, we got.
Daddy line will get you. Yeah, they'll, they'll rack it out.
There's only one grader that had it in all the time, which that's.
Probably didn't need it all the time, did it?
There's no way.
Probably hard on our, hard on the system, actually.
On the tires.
Tires. If it's anything like the front wheel system, like tractors, if you leave them in going down the road, you're eating up your tires.
Yeah. And that's why we had to put new tires on them.
Hopefully, maybe they'll, if that stops.
But, uh.
What was the?
Yeah, he's retired.
One with the four rubber grader alleviated that problem, not much of a, a slip that they.
Which ones don't pull? The front ones then?
Yeah, the front ones.
The four rear ones?
Yeah. And the differential loss is a lot there in the end.
Right. What's, uh, this, I can then understand if you, because I, I see it part of your two additional years, five thousand hours. What is, what does that mean? I mean, it looks like to me that in some way you're buying the thing out. Is that right?
Basically, if you take that two thirty-two, a buyout number up above there, and you brought it down, you added your preventative maintenance, and you added your warranty. That would put you at buying machine at two forty-six oh seventy-nine. So, if you look at it in one year, you've paid two hundred forty-six oh seventy-nine for it. If you drop over the one twenty-seven, six fifty, two eighty-one is half of the two forty-six, and so forth and so on across there. So basically, that's not financing. That just shows you what it, what you would, uh, the machine would cost you plus financing for those years at this point here.
So you're talking sixty-seven thousand dollars a year at one, right?
Yeah.
For two years. Yeah, okay. So do you think that was a bad option in any way, shape, or form?
Looks to me like it is.
Well, that's the way I'm reading it.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's.
Yeah. Better put your money in, in brand new ones, lease a brand new one.
Well, at that price.
At that price.
Well, if, even if you went back and leased the old ones, they would take the residual value, the, the buyout, and put it into new standards. It would be kept at your current contract. So you would, you would, your current, your, your purchase option would, for instance, change from, uh, two thirty-two back down to one twenty-three or one thirty, uh, thirty-nine. So, your, even your payment will be more if you kept the old ones.
I don't think that's. No, I don't either. I just want to make sure I understand it, though.
Now, another thing, April the twenty-first, the prices grew up one percent on the graders.
So. We can't make the deal anyway. I mean, all we can do is create fund measures.
Well, that's kind of why.
Well, they mean that, they mean the, well, they should make it the nineteen, the nineteen.
Twenty-first or twenty-third, the twenty-first or twenty-second?
Yes.
The nineteen, the nineteen. Well, they'll have to decide then.
But then general fee there.
Well, they'll, the other two will have to just do, have to decide.
Basically, if we drop down to the smaller grader, go ahead and lease it for two hundred sixty thousand dollars a year. Over that, that twenty-five or forty, that's what. So, but then we get new machines.
Has the, has the maintenance plan paid for itself?
I believe it has, yes.
I thought it was when we did it directly.
They've done all the services, except for greasing. We do that at by two weeks, you know? They fixed, come up, fixed hoses. We've had four or five hoses real bad. And one electronical problem.
Yeah.
Of course, that would have been a pretty good chunk of money.
They have DEF ready.
Well, I don't know if that would have been on warranty, but.
Uh, I think we had trouble with one.
Yeah, that's normal. That's normal. I do, he has a painter.
I know, they've been up here seven, eight times, other than their normal PM.
And what's a service call cost?
Well, it's under warranty.
Yeah, but what was it called?
What was it?
Oh, it'd be a hundred and forty-five dollars an hour.
Then a trip up.
And, and that starts at the shop, right? At least that's kind of.
Starts when he fixes his gloves.
Yeah, that's right.
As soon as they get the calls.
Yeah, I believe that does pay off. Stay, got enough money.
I wouldn't really say it's been due, it's anything before.
Yeah, I'm not, I, we, we. I'm not, they are kind of promoting those graders and.
Well, we got away from that. I don't see why you should go back.
Yeah, I would just.
This worked way too well.
I would just hope it would be less drastic with the increase.
Well, that's, I, I agree. I'm not exactly excited about the price increase here of that fourteen thousand dollars piece, but,
I saw that and I thought my motor grader days are over. It's like everything else, even let us, let stuff go up in the last three years, pretty significant.
Well, when you and I talked about this, when we were at our, I think it was all, we talked about this, and then they were, weren't they just basically turning around and taking the, the graders that we would turn in and almost sell them for basically a brand-new price or what did?
Well, I remember, and it started this thirty years ago. The first time I did a deal like this was by Oak County. And, uh, they got two new graders, and after one year, they traded them in and got two new, two more, and it cost them ten thousand dollars a machine in, uh, one year. And then, you know, things started catching up, and everybody was doing this deal, and then they said, well, you can only do this every three years. They're still on that three years, but you can't afford to do three years, so it's, it's a way of dial and dock. They're, they get too many machines docked.
Yeah.
They want to produce them, but they.
Well, e- e- exactly, but once dear construction or any of the rest of them gets slow on producing new, they'll change this, they'll turn this cycle back. They'll put it back up because they need to move machines. That's how these plants make their money, is building equipment, right? Right now, they're busy enough that they don't want all this stuff out there, and they can pull it down, so.
The other thing is that the domain on used.
Right.
Once it dries up, which I don't know how long that'll be, but once it dries up, then it's.
Yeah, once you cut down how many used ones are out there, then they'll sort, shorten the cycle again. They'll need to build them because, you know, household. We're in a cycle right now where they're busy.
Yeah.
All right, well, I would support the four-wheel drive version, five years. We'll set five. We'll have a sacrifice or buy our, if they have, we probably will have a bunch in a second, so we, right, so you'll have to go to the commissioners on the nineteenth, and.
Yeah, we'll.
Tell them that they have our blessing to, to, you know, and hopefully get into this, hopefully try to get them to decide, uh, that we don't want to.
Miss it.
We don't want to pay another one's ass, so throw it out.
They'll, they'll understand that, for sure.
So.
Yeah, and that's not one percent sale price. It'd be one percent unless for us.
I'd make most of we take the thirty-nine, two thirty-five, thirteen deal with five of them, four smaller grader.
I'll save it.
All right, all fair.
All right.
So you have our blessings for that.
Thank you.
Yeah. I need to talk to you about a bridge.
Okay.
One Hundred West, I think. They sent me a picture of it, and it's, are we, what are you going to do with that thing?
They're putting a new deck on it.
What, is that a cement deck or a?
No, a core gated metal.
Core made, when do you think that might be?
Honestly, I can't tell you. Bridge inspections, we came up, we had, I think it was twelve bridges. We got to put rip wrap under for scour. Uh, I think we got four of those left to go. Of course, this week was only a, put this.
I know you're a romantic, right?
The road. Uh, this should be finished today.
Oh, good.
So we got to go back to fixing those bridges. I don't want to lose federal money. And then after that, we're going to get back on that bridge. That, that's slow-going, it seems like.
Well, that's what the people were telling me that are complaining.
Of course, we had the winner.
Oh, I know, I know. Well, try to push that up as much as you can, because I'm starting to get calls about it, and I'd like to try to have that fixed sooner rather than later.
Go on, Scooter.
Yeah, well, yeah, I'll tell them it's on schedule, you know, that order. Okay.
Well, we got another one of those due up.
But that's what you're doing. So you, you put rock or anything down in there?
Yeah, we put rock over top, or asphalt, whichever, but I think we.
So you put a metal top on it then?
Yeah.
And then there'll be rock or asphalt or whatever then on top of it?
It was asphalt before, and I think this time we're going back to this white ground. It's a whole road to drive away from it, so.
That's where I'm living, there's some place I'm. I have pictures, I have, they send, send pictures of it, but I have pictures.
You want John R. Tigglis?
Beg your pardon?
John R. Tigglis. It's right down the hill from his house.
Okay.
It's horrible. Yeah, I thought it was, but check me saying that. But you would try and, pot, potter's in your road, that's a great, right? Try to push, try to push that along as fast as you can, because I'm getting complaints, so.
Well, there's still about five people short, so we can do what we can do.
Okay, well, keep trying, keep trying.
Been patching last two weeks.
The pass crew that went down, wrist and road, the back crew that went down, wrist and road, did an excellent job.
Well, I should say all of them are in.
They got them flat level, and I was, yeah, locally, but I'm, uh.
Yeah, they've been all, well, they've all been, and they've all done a pretty good job.
In the past, we've got come down a little bit, but they just, yeah, whoever does it, does a good job.
Got some employees no longer there.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Chris. Good to see you.
Thank you.
I'll probably have to see you before five years. All right, well, yeah.
That rate, I hope not.
Yeah, that's a lot. Yeah, thanks.
Is that the John Deere place at Terry?
Yeah.
I stopped out there the other day and paid for my desk control, and they were servicing a grader in there.
So I think for us, just, you know, we can't ever afford to buy a four new grader till one time, and we were putting so much money in those old ones. Jumples, they put, heck, put new motors in, it'd be fifty-seven thousand. Put a motor in in one of those, and it's still a jump grader. And it's still a jump grader transmission in one of them right before we got rid of them.
Yeah.
Twenty-five thousand in change.
This is the way it's been.
Okay, let's move on. Approval of minutes. Most been made exact approval minutes, March eleventh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have the local health trust. We're going to talk to her. We already passed. Yeah, the local health trust additional is from what we talked about, uh, ours is a poor lease extension of time and rate for the health nurse during the pandemic business here. It should come out at about seventy-four hundred and ten dollars for the work. Um, I realized Chris said that the vehicle's supposed to be five seventy-five. It was advertised at five twenty-five. It cannot be approved at anything above five twenty-five, because it was advertised. You'll have five fifty-dollar transfer.
Okay.
Um, that's, there's no other way around that. I looked up what we sent to paper. It was sent at five twenty-five, so. Anyway, that's for the gator, right?
Yep.
You bought the gator. We had a current ten thousand in the budget. Uh, it went over that by five hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, they bumped it up from the price it would have got last year.
Well, we just went through that with John Deere, just a few minutes ago, right? So, um, that's what that one's for. You have anything else you want to say about it?
Nope, I got the lowest, best price possible with our QPA.
Yeah, I talked to you about that. Uh, you did get the QPA price, which is the state person, the quantity purchase agreement price, I believe, is what that stands for, so. All good there. So, that's the additional.
Second.
Most been made exact approval, all in favor?
All right.
No transfers, no appropriations, pay the jury.
Let me, most, we pay the jury. Second.
Most been made second, pay the jury, all in favor? No reduction of funds, redevelopment commission? Uh, we did meet, uh, we received a request from revolving loan fund as a table pending further information. We wanted a, a couple of references and, um, some other information on a two or three-year established business. This is not a normal revolving loan situation. Most of them are startups, so we asked for a little information, so we tabled that for the time being. The annual tip report was submitted later in the week of that, uh, meeting, um, state requirements. Uh, we are still working on action on some delinquent revolving loan, loans that, uh, have not been paid in a, in a good while at this point. So the process is still moving forward, and then also approved an interlocal agreement with the town regarding this sort of project on Forty-One North funded out of the central tip. That, uh, interlocal agreement, uh, will fund, uh, when we decide in front, a million dollars. Million dollars in the crap will be paid in. Eighty percent of the revenues until it's paid off, up to one point seven five million, I believe. For that process, so. Busy month for results. Planning?
Uh, planning didn't have any things. Sony had a request for appearance on the top of Walker boat that were both maybe for the C store up there, and for some reason they took it. One of them reported more information.
But a wash store?
It's a meat store.
Oh. Just up from the rank?
They took it up from the top of rank, yeah. I guess they told the neighbors a month ago, if they did, very sorry. Marshall put, uh, yeah, mayor, yeah, well, I said one or more members want a, want to jump in. So, they have it. It's been tabled next month.
Uh, courthouse security is on eight. Any business, library department? Okay, uh, some of you, well, this has been communicated to, to the board. Uh, we were informed by the secretary of the library board on March fifteenth that one of our appointments, um, which is Randy Wright, had missed six consecutive meetings. Per statute, uh, that deems that position vacant. So, from that, bringing statutory requirement, and obviously missed six in a row, uh, solicited interest in a new appointment to fill out his remaining term, which would end at the end of next month, May thirty-first. Uh, Sherry Paxton has agreed to perform that, or to serve as our appointment to the library board. So I would propose two appointment forms.
So, I would propose two appointment forms for Sherry, one to fill out the remaining term for the vacated position starting today, ending on the thirty-first of May. And the second would be beginning on the first of June, twenty-one, and ending the thirty-first day of May, twenty twenty-five. Is that right?
Yeah.
She's agreed to serve. I would ask that we make these appointments available.
Pretty, if you don't know, she's a first grade teacher at Rockville Elementary.
I hired her.
She's good. See, Wesley had her in class, so she's.
Is that a great comment?
I think she would be in good condition to the library if she's interested, so.
Most in the point?
Thanks.
Okay, most been made, section appoint Sherry Paxton to the Rock, to the Park County Library Board. All fair.
Aye. I also will ask for permission of council, this letter, this, the letter, this senior packet, be sent by the auditor to Randy thanking him for his service as an appointment of ours, informing him that his, his term has been vacated.
Um, AIC is coming up. It's in Greencastle, I assume, in like, uh, May eighteen. They normally have dinner and then legislative update, any council members that wish to go, why should probably the auditor, I guess, or somebody, if you make your reservations. So, it's a good thing to go to if you can. I mean, it's one of the actual hunter things we begin to do, which are few and far between, but, uh, it's a nice evening to do other county visits and that sort of thing, so you can all let the auditor know if you wish her to make the reservations. Or that, if you've got a little time, I don't know when they have to be, and probably around the first of May or so, something like that. You can let the auditor know. Yeah, you can put me down, too, I'll go. It's, it's a nice thing to do if you can.
Anybody else?
I do.
It's a good, it's a nice evening, it's not that far. Can I have anything else? Anybody have anything else?
Um, next month or so, we're beginning, uh, started sending out letter requests for, it's a request for budget for twenty-two. It's already getting close to that point, so, and generally send that letter out in May. Uh, with them to be back in due, so. Go ahead, just sharpen your pencils a little bit, it's getting that time.
Good. Anybody else say anything?
Second.
Thank you, all right.